Yeah, like six o'clock.
I call this meeting, regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order on April 9, 2024. This meeting is being recorded, and will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer, here. Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Alesskowitz? Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Nine present.
Nine present. We have a quorum. Okay. A moment of silent remembrance. Please rise. And the pledge. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we do not have meeting minutes available from the March 26, 2024 council meeting, so we'll move on to hearing of visitors on the agenda. Hey, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I ask all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. All right, council paper number 11,826, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams regarding various fees established in the city code, referred back to the Finance Committee with a return date of April 9, 2024. Let's see. Counselor Bona, do you have an update?
Yeah, so we will be requesting a postpone this again for one more meeting. There is a part, first step, we will be talking tonight that will be presented by Counselor Fitch. We're getting close, really close, but just not there yet. So again, I will recommend a postpone to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone the second meeting. And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council paper number 12,191, a communication from Counselor Shade, requesting the local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage. Postpone from the meeting of February 27, 2024, with a return date of April 9, 2024. Counselor Blackmer, do you have an update?
No, I just, I'll have it ready for the next meeting. So I move to postpone to the meeting of April 23.
Motion to postpone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Counselor Morrow, second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Council paper number 12,364, a communication from Counselor Fitch, requesting time for a presentation about crosswalk safety and a discussion of opportunities for improvement, referred to administration with a return date of April 9, 2024. Counselor Fitch, do you have an update?
Sure. Yeah, about a month and a half or two months ago or so, I presented in front of city council, you know, some suggestions for what we could do to make our crossings around our city safer and also more beautiful at the same time. We referred it to the administration collectively, and so Jennifer Maxi, if you're boogling.
Sure, happy to. I just want to make sure, can you hear me okay over there? So we are kicking this around internally as far as the crosswalks go. We're trying to evaluate what we can do, what we can't do. We certainly are interested in the project, but it's going to take us a little bit longer. So I respectfully request that we refer that maybe until the first meeting in June. But we did move forward on the electrical boxes. So we have made some progress there. That wasn't on the agenda, but we are still reviewing the traffic crosswalks internally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Oh, God, I shut it off. Shut it right off.
Okay. Counselor Fitch, what is your pleasure on this motion?
Yeah, I suppose I'll follow the mayor's request to kick this to the second meeting in, or sorry, first meeting in June.
Okay, would you make a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to kick this to the first meeting in June.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Council paper number 11,826-1, a communication from Counselor Fitch, requesting time for presentation regarding rescinding approval of Mass General Law, Part 1, Title, let's see, 14, I would say, is that right? 14?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I read my Roman numerals properly. Chapter 90, Section 20A, and approving MGL, Part 1, Title 14, Chapter 90, Section 20A, and one-half in place of?
Move to send to general government.
Okay, this is just the communication.
Well, when we get there.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Get there, yeah. Counselor Fitch, would you like to elaborate on that, please?
Yes, certainly. And folks, I put this as well into the packets, or actually, excuse me, our city clerk put this into our packets for us. I put in some screenshots and some links as well, so if folks have a PDF version, you should be able to click on those. Or you can also just search, you know, MGL, Chapter 90, Section 20A, to know what we're talking about. We had a couple of meetings in the Finance Committee about this specifically. We also had a meeting with our city solicitor, who informed us that we are out of compliance right now. And we're out of compliance because we, as a city, adopted in 1981, Chapter 90, Section 20A, which states that the maximum fine for motor vehicle and traffic fines is $25. We're out of compliance because several of our fines are higher than that. So this is not a significant infraction. However, we are out of compliance. So in order to move us back into compliance, we should strike that, and we should adopt 20A and a half, which states that the maximum fine would be $50. That would bring us into compliance. So this is kind of step one of this project that we're working on in the Finance Committee.
Any discussion or questions? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, so again, I know we're in communication, but I'll continue. So very simply, this needs to be done before we approve. So the next meeting, if we are, you know, if the, all the fees and fines come into place, we need this to be in place before we do that. I understand, you know, something typically we do send something like this to general government. This was, though, discussed in a committee, and it's really just a simple, I don't want to say suggestion, but basically a solicitor saying, you know, you need to do this. You need to do this with the fees you have now. And again, if we're continuing to increase any parking, it's just adopting, saying, we agree with 20A and a half with the state, which just allows us. Now, surprisingly, there's only two communities in the state that do allow parking fines over $50. I would have assumed there would have been more, especially with the bigger cities, but Boston, Cambridge are the only two cities right now that got special approval from the legislation to be able to give parking fines over $50. But again, we did discuss, we did already have a meeting with the solicitor, and this was discussed. So if it does get referred to another meeting, it would need to come back, and we would probably want to approve it right before, or another committee, we would need to approve it before we can take the next step into approving the other fees and fines.
Counselor Fitch?
Actually, if you want to go.
Yeah. Counselor Blackmer?
Well, so basically, it should come back on ordinance paper? I mean, if we're gonna...
Yes. Ordinance paper.
Yeah.
It should come out in ordinance form and on ordinance paper.
Yeah. We'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, because I was like, it says, I was making sure the next ordinance wasn't that. So it has to come back in that format to vote, to pass to a second reading and publish. So I'm just making sure that we follow that and that it's listed as a separate.
It is. There's an ordinance one right after.
So 12,8116? I'm sorry, 826-1?
No, 11,826-1. There's a communication and there's an ordinance.
Usually we have, okay, it doesn't look like the same ordinance, that's all. Okay, rescinding, it doesn't reference the ordinance in the first one. Okay, I just, it doesn't really, I guess it's fine, but it's not really in the format we normally put ordinances forward.
Okay.
That's communication, and then, because, yeah, it's usually a separate paper with an ordinance.
Well, folks, and by the way, this is my first ordinance.
No, and I appreciate that.
So that, but as long as this is going to work, let's proceed, if that's all right.
Did you have anything else?
I did have one more thing. Counselor Shade pointed out that I made a mistake and I left something in here. So this is in the actual ordinance. We'll get into this in a moment, but I will make a motion to amend the language in there, because it says in there, "See supporting screenshot and link below," so we'll get into that into the next one.
Right.
FYI, sorry about the mistake, folks.
Counselor Shade?
Yes. Just for clarification, this particular section of MGL only relates to parking fines and does not include handicap parking, which is separate. So handicap parking is $300 fine if you park in a handicap spot. This does not affect that. That's covered in a different section of MGL. But any other parking fine, this would be connected to, and it would allow us to fine up to $50 for those violations currently. Based on the current MGL, it is only $25 that we are supposed to be fining people for. So it just allows us to find, have a higher fine for parking violations. And it was recommended by the solicitor, as they had stated in a Finance Committee meeting, that we should adopt this particular section of MGL to both, one, be in compliant with our current fees that are already on the books, and two, make sure we have this in place before we adopt and change new ones that would be for more than $25.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. All right, I'm going to file the communication. Council paper number 11,826-1, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, Chapter 13, Articles 5 and 6, references to MGLs. And Counselor Fitch, do you want to update any more information on that? Are you all set?
Do that now?
Well, you can make the motion first.
Pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
Thank you. Second.
Okay. We have a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. Counselor Breen?
I have a question. Is this going to be part of the revised ordinance where you have the, all the funding, like in Section D? Is this also going to be included in that piece also?
This is part of that. This is a prelude to that process.
This is separate. There's already an ordinance that we've adopted for MGL law. This would be replacing what we've adopted so that we can update our fees.
Okay, so it'll show in the new?
The new fees would be in the new listing, but in order for some of them, the recommendations that have been given to the committee. In order for those to be adopted, we have to pass this first, so we are compliant with MGL law.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance by striking the open parentheses, "See supporting screenshot and link below," closed parenthesis.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to delete the "See supporting screenshot and link below." All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion, we have the original motion to pass to, pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, wait a minute, this has to be a roll call, doesn't it?
No, it only has to be a roll call when it's actually.
We'll go to the next step. Okay, great, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Sorry.
Okay, motion passes. Who seconded? Counselor Shade?
I didn't second it.
Counselor Fitch, I made the motion and Counselor Fitch.
Counselor Fitch, okay.
And then he made the motion to amend, and Counselor Bona seconded it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Counselor Shade has something to?
Yep, point of order.
Yes.
So before I was in time to adopt the new fees, if we're going to do that at the next meeting, this will need to meet its requirement and be ready for the next meeting. Is that possible?
I will put it in tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, we'd have to postpone that as well.
Right. Okay. Council paper 12,379, communication number 32 from Mayor Maxi, recommending the reappointment of Richard Wood to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire May 1, 2029.
To approve?
Second.
Okay, Counselor Wilkinson, or no, Counselor Alesskowitz and Counselor Shade?
See, it's not me.
Lisa's passing on that. It's got to be this chair. It's something with the...
How are your glasses doing?
I do need to get to see a doctor, yes.
Twins.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Okay. Council paper number 12,380, a communication from Clerk, City Clerk Leonazio, presenting an open meeting law complaint to be reviewed and responded to by City Council from Karen Tatro regarding specified council minutes, stated in complaint, not present on the, not present on the city's website. I am going to file this communication without objection. And let me give you some background on this. There was an open meeting law complaint filed by Karen Tatro on March 26, 2024, stating that the, let's see, I'll read this real quick. Stating that currently, the North Adams City Council, in which Counselor Sapienza is the president since January 2024, is substantially out of compliance with the open meeting law due to lack of meeting minutes. The city provides a website and a link specific for the city council to give public access to agendas and meeting minutes. The public access website is missing six meeting minutes from January 24, including January 1, January 9, January 23, February 13, February 27, and March 12. Of these six meetings without meeting minutes, three are out of compliance with open meeting law requirements, including January 1, January 9, and January 2023. Okay. We do have them. Okay, all right. As of this evening, all six meetings are posted and are linked on our city website. Any discussion? Counselor Alesskowitz?
Instead of wasting time on discussion on this recurring thing over and over, I just make a motion to send it to general government?
Nope.
No. No.
No.
Counselor Blackmer?
Counselor Sapienza, I would suggest you did write a response.
I did.
On behalf of us. One, these minutes do not need to, although they are posted there and they are, they are now updated, they do not need to buy Mass General Law, Open Meeting Law, they do not need to be. So if you read your response, and then we could just say, yep, send it. I would suggest that we do that, and then the other two will refer to their committees.
Okay, this is my response. This is addressed to Karen Tatro of Mill Street, North Adams Mast. The city council president received your open meeting law complaint on Monday, March 27, 2024. The council body has met on April 9, 2024, at 7:00 PM to address your complaint. Your complaint stated that the city council is substantially out of compliance with the open meeting law due to lack of meeting minutes. You state that the city provides a website and a link specific for the city council to give public access to agendas and meeting minutes. You also state that this public access website is missing six meeting minutes from January, from 2024, including the six dates, January 1, 9, 23, February 13, 27, and March 12. In response to said complaint, the meetings that you listed were indeed missing on the website, and the links have been updated, so that these documents are now available on the website. It has also been discussed that the website will be updated in a timely manner. The city council did not violate the requirements of the open meeting law by not providing a link on the website. The open meeting law does not require a public body to post meeting minutes to a website. The public records law does require that a public body provide, through a records request, requested records within 10 days of a request for such records if they exist. You made no such request for the records in question. Furthermore, the city council did not violate the requirements of the open meeting law by being out of compliance with open meeting law requirements, as you stated regarding the minutes of January 1, 9, and 23, 2024, meeting minutes. The meeting minutes of the three meetings that you allege were out of compliance were approved within the time requirements of the open meeting law regulations and were on file with the city clerk's office as required by law. Had a timely request of those meeting minutes been made, they would have been available through a public records request through the city's public records officer, signed, Counselor Brian Sapienza. Any discussion? Counselor Blackmer?
I would correct your statement to say Wednesday, the 27th, because the 26th is Tuesday, that night it was sent out. And it's dated the 26th, and I'm looking at the calendar, and those, the day and dates don't match. Just to make sure that you, the 27th was Wednesday, and you said Sunday, or Monday.
I believe it was a Monday.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Okay.
It was a, that's April 26 is Friday, so March, the 25th was Monday, the 26th was Tuesday, and the 27th was Wednesday. And these are dated the 26th, so I'm guessing they came in overnight, and we saw them sometime the next, on the 27th, which was Wednesday.
It was my understanding that these came in on a Sunday?
I thought they came in on a Sunday.
Okay.
She dated on.
I don't know, but if, we didn't get the forwarded email, so I don't know.
Counselor Shade?
Yeah, I believe the confusion is she might have emailed them on Sunday for the meeting that was on the 26th, which might be where that date is coming from.
Okay.
We did have a meeting on the 26th, that's it. So that, that could be the confusion.
All right.
But, yeah, the dates should be corrected in the response to match.
And if that's the case, well, we'll get to the next one.
Yeah. So the dates will be corrected as, as discussed. Any further discussion? Counselor Fitch?
Through the chair to the city clerk, if I may. Yeah, thank you. Did Karen Tatro reach out to you requesting these records?
No.
Okay.
I never received any requests. The requests would go through our records request person and then come to me. There was never any.
Okay. Do we have any idea why there's a complaint being made if, if they didn't do that outreach?
We, we can't answer that at this time.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Counselor Breen?
I have a question. The open meeting pamphlet that came out, I guess it was in 2017, talks about using, adapting a municipal website as the official method of notice posting. And it says that, it says you can place them, like we do, outside the building, different things like that. But, but what's interesting about it, it says, prior to utilizing the municipal website, the CEO of the municipality must authorize or vote to adopt such website as an official method of posting notices.
We've never done that.
No, we have not done that.
Our official method of posting our agendas are our boards.
Because according to Division of Open Government, we haven't made it official?
No, we have not.
Okay, so.
No, we're listed with the state as our official postings are for our boards.
Perfect, perfect. So, so.
Physical boards.
These requests of what's being posted is just another convenience place to get things. Should a person should be using the public records law, it just come to you and say, I would like to have this or have, have that? It's not anything to do with open meeting?
It is not.
Okay.
It, it.
Counsel Blackmer?
I want to clarify, too, the posting, the legal posting place is separate from the minutes place.
It is.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that, because you're talking, we legally have to post the agendas on the board outside.
I understand that fully, but what I'm saying is, the website's not even official. So it doesn't matter what's on the website. It's not official for anything. It's just another area of convenience for people to get things.
Correct.
It's, it's a public convenience, yeah.
That's all it is.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, so I guess a motion would be in order to approve this response?
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be forwarded. Okay. Council paper number 12,381, communication from City Clerk Leonazio, presenting an open meeting law complaint to be reviewed and responded to by City Council from Karen Tatro regarding specified city council finance committee minutes, stated in complaint, not present on the city's website.
Move to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Blackmer?
Well, one thing we need to clarify, the date, this actually came in, the date, not necessarily the day and the date, but also in any response, the, a complaint about, an open meeting law complaint should be, is, by, by law, is to be sent to the chair of the committee. So these were sent to the council president and the city clerk. In reality, they should have been sent to Counsel Bona. So in the response, because if we find out that this was a, you had it on Monday, the 25th, then meeting next week is not going to meet that, but you just respond that you didn't get it per open meeting law guidelines. And I have, I've used the language before because we've run into this before. It's not the first time that we've been sent to the wrong place. So that's.
Counselor Breen?
I think we need to correct, in our statement, this public access website, we just said five minutes ago, it's not our public access website.
We've already approved that, though, right?
Yeah, it is, it is accepted as a, as public access, but it is only for the convenience of the public. It's not the official instrument, and we are registered with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as being physical postings and not posting on the website.
We do not, we do not have a public access website.
I don't know, I can get to it. I'm a public.
With public access.
Counsel Blackmer?
Public access, I guess, is there a legal definition that you're looking at?
Yeah, the thing is, everything, our emails are, are public records. You can't get them on our site. Other sites you can. What I'm saying is, we don't have an official public access website. We don't have the database. We don't, we don't have what the requirements are if we're going to call it an open meeting, public access website. We don't have that.
It doesn't matter what language the complainant puts in there. We basically respond that, that's not our official place, and that, I think, we don't always know why people... people are asking for what they're asking for, but our response is that we didn't violate it. This is the deal, and.
Here's the chair, or to the chair. She's asking on January 2022. It also says it has to be within 60 days.
That was 30, but, okay.
Why are we talking about something that's two years old when in the, the thing that says 60 days?
Counselor Shade?
Yes. She's bringing up dates that she can't find on the website. These are going to be sent to committee. The committees are going to look into them and then respond to her, and let her know how to access the information. So rather than discussing what's in the complaint now, we're going to send it to committee to do that.
Well, the problem I have with that is this can go on forever. Next week we get some that were 2021.
It'll wait a while.
We, we, we have to make a statement.
We have to reply to the, the law is, we have to reply to the complaint, regardless of whether it's valid or not, or whether it's superfluous. And the only way, if you find that you're being, like you're saying, we're getting a bunch of them, only one community has actually been able to report that to the keeper of the records, the secretary of state, where they've actually found on behalf of the town and not the plaintiff, the complainants. We have to respond. It, it doesn't matter if they said that there's, there's unicorns out there pooping rainbows, and that's against the open meeting law. We still have to respond.
Yes.
Can I quote you?
Presently, there are 11 complaints against the City of North Adams over time on, on the attorney general's thing. Three of them were proven that they were, in fact, a, a violation. The others are not.
I understand.
Of the 11, how many were brought before the city council?
Were they all city council? Were they all, I mean, I understand your frustration. I've been dealing with this law for quite a bit longer than you have, and you have to respond, whether they're, whether you don't agree with them or not, we still have to respond.
The complainant's recommendation is that they read the 18 pages of open, um, law. Maybe the, the complainant should read the 18 pages.
We, we can't be in control of what the complainant does or does not do.
But we can, we can give a recommendation.
But as, as city councillors, we are familiar with the open meeting laws, and we are responding to the best of our abilities to those complaints, and that's what the law requires. Counselor Blackmore?
Move the question.
Move the question?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have to vote on the question.
Okay.
We have to vote on the motion now?
Yep, okay, so we have to have a motion to refer to general government?
The finance.
Fin, I'm sorry, Finance Committee, yep, Finance Committee.
So moved.
We made that, we made the motion.
Yeah, okay.
It's already been made, we need to vote on it.
Blackmore, Counsel Blackmore, and seconded by Counselor Bona?
Yes. Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, referred to the Finance Committee. Council Paper Number 12,382, A Communication from City Clerk Leonazio, Presenting an Open Meeting Law Complaint to be Reviewed and Responded to by City Council from Karen Tatro Regarding Specified City Council Gener- General Government Committee Minutes, Stated in Complaint Not Present in the City's Website.
Move to general, I'll move to, to general government?
Right, you need to file, okay, yep.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are moving that on to general government, okay. Okay, licenses, we have none? Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. As a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody wish to speak to open forum tonight? Okay. Mayor's Updates.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just a couple of updates coming out of my office tonight. Um, the first is somewhat of a sad update in the sense that our auditor, Dave Fiero, has taken a full-time position with the town of Williamstown, and will be starting that position on the 16th. So you may have seen advertised, um, the auditor's position, so we are looking for a full-time auditor. As most of you know, um, at some point Dave was here full-time. I believe maybe four or five years ago, um, he started working for us on a part-time capacity as a contract service employee. So as part of our new budget presentation, we will be restoring that position to a full-time in-house auditor. And we're hoping that we can make a hire very soon. Dave has agreed to continue on in his consulting role through the budget cycle and to help train a new person. But we wish Dave all the best, but he'll certainly be missed, so I wanted to give you that update. Can you hear me okay, P? Yeah, okay. Also, on, uh, Friday, I can't believe it's already April 12th, um, you all should have received invitations to our Route 2 Overpass Study Kickoff, which will be held at the Berkshire Innovation Center at Mass MoCA. Um, it is from 12 to 1:30, so I hope all the council can join us. And then also, on Wednesday, April 24th, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, we will be having what we call an ascertainment hearing for our cable license with spectrum. It will be, include not only us, but Adams, Cheshire, and Clarksburg. Everyone is welcome to join us in council chambers. The purple, purpose of this hearing is to identify future cable-related community needs and interests, and to renew the performance of the cable operator. So this is a time for people to come and talk about the importance of public access and the importance of cable, and also maybe voice their concerns about some cable issues. Um, so again, that's Wednesday, April 24th, at 6:00 PM. Um, we are running it in the newspapers, and we'll start pushing it out via Facebook. And I can send, have Lindsay send you a copy of the notice, so you can put it on your agendas. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He doesn't see me over here.
Counselor Wilkinson, go ahead.
Thank you. Are you sure this room is going to be big enough?
Bring them in. Pack them in.
Oh, it's going to be packed.
Yep. That's fine. The more the merrier, Counselor Wilkinson.
Yep. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, um, through the chair. Uh, and to be clear, that this is specifically the cable, it does not affect the internet and streaming, right? When we have our contract, as, so when people are out there complaining about spectrum internet, that has nothing to do with this, this is cable, strictly cable.
It, it is, but our hope is also that spectrum will hear other complaints as well.
Okay.
Counselor Breen?
I know Adams, in the past, would get free television from, um, the cable. Is that also in North Adams? The school systems?
I think so, yes. I think we get some kind of reduced rate, but we mostly get a, a fixed percentage of, um, the cable that comes into our munitec fund. Um, years ago, that was an option, but I, I mean, I don't have a TV in my office, so I don't have cable.
Anyone else?
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Okay, committee reports in minutes. Counselor Shade?
Yes, um, the idea commission is currently still working on new workshops for, um, our workshops to make available for elected officials. Anyone who would like to review the old workshops that are available, we do have them available, just send a request, um, to be in compliance with, uh, city council rules. Um, we can make those available, but we are working on new workshops that we will offer after the budget meetings are over with, um, so that more people will be able to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, liaison updates. Seeing none? Uh, councilors' concerns and correspondence. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, mayor, just to clarify, the roadwork that's being done on Houghton and Eagle right now, are those, those are gas lines being put in? Are there other streets that are, that's going to happen on?
Yeah, so, um, Houghton and Eagle are right now under construction with Berkshire Gas. Once they're done, they'll become our property again and will be reclaimed under the Chapter 90 project. Berkshire Gas has a, a significant li, um, list of, of areas that they're working on. Um, we spoke to them this morning about notifying us ahead of time when roads were going to be closed specifically for school bus access. So it's a work in progress.
Thank you. And that, any other major streets besides those?
Those are the big ones. They've already done, um, and possibly some work on Ashland Street. They're, we're trying to get their, their work done before we start our Ashland Street corridor project.
Okay, thank you.
I could look, I could get the list and share it with you, if you'd like.
Hey, anybody else? Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, certainly. Um, the Husick River Revival Organization is hosting their Wake Up the River event on Saturday, the 20th, that's Earth Day, um, where they're cleaning up portions of the Husick River. This is from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM, Saturday, April 20th, at Knoll Field. You can find details on husickriverrevival.org, or the flyers that are all over downtown, or their Facebook page.
Okay. Okay, one item I would like to mention is, uh, we are going to do better. I know some of you have asked me to try to get the agendas out earlier, and normally in the last couple of weeks, I've met with the city clerk on the Friday before the meeting. We're going to try to do that, move that to a Wednesday night, so that the, uh, agendas are on the street, ready for your, uh, review by Thursday. It's sometime during the day on Thursday.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.